All right, I would like to call the May 27th, 2015 Montmorey Regional School Committee to order the reason why I am wanting to order as the superintendent is that we have our first order of business is the reorganization of the school committee after our annual town meetings in both towns and the town elections where we'll have the election of the chairperson and the vice-chairperson for the school committee.
Can you go ahead for nominees?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Steve Devaux.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? No. I guess not, see if it hasn't run out the door. Guess then, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Brian Whittingham as vice-chair representing the township of Howard.
Second. Any discussion?
Hmm. This has to be a nice discussion.
All in favor? Aye. All right. My work here is done. Congratulations, Stephen Bryan.
I apologize now for not being as witty and keeping things as light as Chairman Russell had for the last year. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 13th.
So.
Second. Any changes, additions, or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go to your names. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the school committee? Hearing and saying none, we'll move on to recognitions.
I just want to quickly recognize the musical performances that happened last night. I didn't catch the musical performance at Howard Elementary School. I think one of the things that we need to fine-tune with this district is making sure that we don't overlap performances. And I had a couple of parents reach out to me. I appreciate that, just sort of letting me know that we had two musical performances happening at the same time. I happened to see Diana Fiscano at the middle school do a fabulous job with the choir, and it was great. But I also had a chance to see a little bit of the rehearsal at the middle school. Great performances, all in all. One of the other things I just wanted to share appreciation of, I mentioned before that Montmorey Regional is part of the Need Academy, which is, see, we're one of three school districts. It's ourselves, Dennis Charmuth and Fowmuth, that have for years been engaged in an environmental education program up in Truro. And I had the opportunity this week to, or this past week, to go up and visit Ms. Kane's class as they were on their week-long endeavor in Truro. It was really interesting for me because at almost 50, I'm looking at these young naturalists who are going around in their twenties with our students, teaching them about the ecology of Cape Cod. And when I was in my early twenties, I lived in a nature sanctuary in the Poconos and Lakewood Nature Sanctuary, and I did that same thing for kids. I was, it was neat. I'm sitting there trying to not say anything, and I did a good job of not saying anything. Shocking, Stephen, I know. But everything I could have thought about saying, in my knowledge that I hadn't asked over the years, they were conveyed to our kids. I was so impressed by the quality of instruction and just the dedication of these young adults who are working with our students as the naturalists in that program. And it was, I mean, I went on a day, I just sort of picked the day of the week and couldn't help, it was raining that day, so I was with the group as we were going through a rainy trip through a white cedar swamp, and with lots of mosquitoes. And I think some people might have seen that as a really miserable experience, and I'm walking out of there with these kids talking about swamp azalea and this sweet pepper bush. And it was, it was really neat to just see the, you know, those naturalists in their element. So, kudos to the program, and I just am so glad to have that opportunity to get up and see what we're involved, you know, what we're involved in there.
Very good.
I'd just like to comment on the two things that you've commented about. I wasn't able to attend either of those music performances, but I saw clips of them on, I think it's Supportum Montmorey or something, and they were amazing, amazing, both of them. And as far as the Need Collaborative goes, I think it's just, I don't really know so much about what they are learning there, but I know for years, when the kids have come back, the classes have been bonded in a very different way than they were before they left. And some of the kids that didn't say much about school all of a sudden become chatterboxes. So, I just think these are two wonderful things that we have to brag about.
Next on the agenda is the student representative reports.
So, I'm just gonna give a few snippets of the happenings around here. I never feel like I get it all, but I think it's a good sign that there's so much going on that I might miss a few. So, just a couple of things. Okay, so firstly, our, one of the history teachers, Mr. Alexander, today spoke at the baseball Hall of Fame for his history of baseball class, and so we were really proud of him. Last week, the seniors had their last day of classes, and they also pulled a wonderful prank down in the middle hallway. They filled the whole hallway with balloons and streamers and memorabilia, and it was just really nice because they were such a great class, just really great role models for all of us, and they set such a great example. And so, to wrap up their year, there's gonna be a seniors versus faculty softball game on June 12th, so that should be fun. And they also have graduation on the 7th of June. Also, three students attended a Rotary-sponsored youth leadership conference two weekends ago, and the Harwich, Dennis, and Chatham Rotary Club sponsored three students to go, and it was the first year ever, and it was a great success. May 17th was the fishing tournament, which was also hugely successful, and it was the first year of that as well. Another, Jen Keim, the first girl on the golf team, shot 37 yesterday at the league meet, and she came in first out of anyone. And she also is ranked fourth in New England for girls' golf, so we're really lucky to have her. Speaking of sports, girls' golf, track, baseball, and girls' tennis made the tournament this year. And a couple of teams are still pending. Tomorrow night is the final spring concert at 7:00. And tomorrow also is the energy carnival at the middle school, which several high school students will be volunteering on. And that's all, guys. Thank you.
Good job, Lane.
Thank you.
And I believe we have some middle school students to come up.
Last Tuesday, the sixth grade held an international fair project in the cafeteria of the middle school. And there were a lot of different kinds of countries that people gave reports on. There were, after a bit, our teachers let us wander around and see everybody else's project. Like, one partner would stay at the presentation, and then the other partner would get a break about 10 minutes or so to wander around, see everybody else's project, and see how they'd done. And I'd say that everybody did a really good job on all their projects. Addressing all the five themes of geography, location, place, region, movement, and human environment interaction, sixth grade students were collaboratively in pairs to research and creatively display the five geography themes of their country. And I'd probably say that everyone did an amazing job displaying their board, displaying their facts. Many students, they brought food items so people could taste something that would be from their country. Some people also did, like, other, they dressed in costumes. Some examples of the displays included Animoto. Animoto brings music, text, and images together to create a video, PowerPoints, trifold boards, mobiles, travel posters, and posters. Also, I think that all the costumes were fabulous, and the way that people put this together was just really creative. My partner and I, one day we just got together, and we got the Dominican Republic, and she said, "Why not do a trifold board?" And I said, "Okay." And it was Saturday, it was a Saturday, we got together, and we just worked all day on the project. We didn't stop until it was around 4:00-ish, and so we decided to take a break from that. And then I finished it up the next day, and that was, that was really fun to just get together over a country and find out all different things that you never even knew about that country.
Many students included music, dressed in their country's clothing, and prepared food dishes. Ingredients of recipes were printed and displayed to accommodate any possible food allergies. And I agree with Isabel, it was really cool to walk around and, like, see a bunch of other people's projects because you got to learn facts, like, that you didn't know about those countries, and it was cool to get a taste of, like, all around the world in only an hour, and it was very colorful and creative.
I agree.
As parents and guests arrived, they picked up a travel passport and a question prompt sheet. Guests traveled throughout all the countries, and after each visit, their passports were stamped with individual stamps that were provided by the teachers. Also, I think that the way that each presentation was made was special in their own way, very creative. The way that people organized the five themes was magnificent, I think. It was a night of fun, food conversations, learning, and connections. Chatham, Harwich, and school choice students came together as Montmorey. There were, a lot, a lot of students made this, I think that all the students that came together to work on this just made this bigger than the, that the geography teachers would think, because the next day, my geography teacher, Ms. Frulo, she said that they were, there were like 200 people, I think, 100 people, at that, and she said that that was beyond expectations, and she thought that they were brilliant presentations there.
Another thing about this is that it was really cool how kids from Chatham and Harwich got to work together and, like, get to know more about each other that they wouldn't know if they hadn't worked on each other with this project.
Yeah. Some kids said it was so fun, we loved seeing everyone's hard work and creativity. They were all so different, each unique with their own smiles. There were a lot of little kids, there were quite a few little kids there, and I think they enjoyed all the bright colors and all the beautiful costumes, and also, some kids provided music from their country that they let the other people listen to, which is really cool, I think, because then people get, like, get to know what kind of music that, that country, like, produces, what kind of music that country makes.
And it wasn't just the kids that enjoyed it, also, most of the teachers and parents, especially. My mom really likes Chinese food, she kept going back to China like 17 times.
Well, the Chinese food, y'all, definitely.
And some kids said that the food was good. It was fun, and we got a taste of each of other countries. And after this project, I really know the five themes of geography, and so do I personally. There were, I think, the people that did this, they worked really hard on this, they were really thorough about their facts, and I don't think anybody left out a single detail.
Here's a more pictures.
I think that all the countries that were in here, that people, they just, they, some people, they didn't even know what that country was about, or some people didn't even know where that country was located. And once they did more, more research about it, I think they know pretty much everything about that country inside and out.
Can we go back?
Okay.
It was really cool how students learned, like, a lot about their country. On the right is my friend named Geraldine. She just moved here about a year ago from the Dominican Republic and barely knows any English, and she started late on this project, and she didn't think that she was gonna be able to learn anything about the Netherlands. But, I mean, look at her project, she did much detail. Her and her partner worked very well together, and it was just really cool.
Yeah. We hope you will join us next year. This was, this was, this was a really fun experience for me, because at my old school, my school didn't really do anything like this, but it was really fun to just collaborate with all the other kids. It was so much fun. And, thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Your names.
Oh, I'm Maddie Flaherty, and that's Isabel Corrie.
Lane, we have to cry, I'm not gonna watch.
Expecting social media next time.
One thing I've been remiss in is welcoming our newest member, Karen Ryder, our newest Chatham representative. We're very pleased to have you here with us.
Thank you.
Reports and discussions. And there is, which is a miracle. A miracle, yes. So, the next item is supplementary reports?
Well, actually, I have passed out a listing of who's on what current subcommittees, so everybody can think about this over the next couple of weeks, and we have our next meeting, when Terry's not here, he's getting nominated for everything.
That's very good, Steve. What do you think, Bill East?
Actually, we'll put it off until our second week in June, when Terry's here, and we'll, but it gives you an opportunity to see what's there, and if you have any questions about what any of the subcommittees do, feel free to ask.
Will we be having all of these same subcommittees?
Excuse me?
Will some of these subcommittees be, like, the Harwich Middle School repurposing, and, because there might be some that...
Right, and then discussion afterward, yeah. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Just to quickly loop to some of the subcommittees, the building subcommittee, we had a building committee meeting last Thursday, and one of the things that we did was, is that committee expressed appreciation for Kevin Door, who has been really the go-to person for the architecture firm, like, you know, we've been using, on Learning Roots, and Kevin, Kevin has been here all hours of the evening sometimes. I think, hopefully, many of you can remember when, when the lights went out, you know, one night during the school committee meeting, Kevin was still in the building, trying to debug, okay, what went wrong, you know, what went wrong and why. But, you know, to his credit, you know, he is, well, he's taken a different job with another firm he's staying on, you know, with the project, has access to go and really, you know, get us through that, you know, the, you know, sort of end, that, you know, that final punch list phase. And there are little, you know, there are little things that, you know, every time you come up, there's sort of another little thing that hadn't, you know, hadn't gotten done that, you know, that's now in place. As I was moving up today, it was nice to see that the, you know, that the sign out front on the marquee is lighted, and it looked like it had something come up as I drove by, and then it went away. So, but, you know, but it's those, you know, it's the, those little bits, you know, the little bits of progress to have us get, you know, get that, that project to fruition. One of the things that we are still trying to wrestle with is the insurance coin, and, you know, I think a challenge that Katie and I were discussing today is, we'll call it a philosophical challenge, where, you know, where there's, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that was in the space, and, you know, how much of it is truly damaged by the water, and how much of it escaped having a waterfall on it, but may not, you know, may not have as long a lifespan because it was in a wet environment. And I think that, you know, that insurance adjuster is probably of the mind that not all of it's a loss, and I think the challenge that we have right now is, how do we go and move forward when, you know, when there's, you know, when you have our electronics consultant, you know, says replace it all, and I think there might be, you know, the insurance adjuster saying, well, you know, replace it all, that might just be the easy way out for that. So, that will be the thing that we'll be wrestling with between now and the next, you know, our next meeting, we'll report back on, but, you know, but we're, you know, very eager to get this moving forward so that we can have the, you know, the cable studio up and running as we delve into the new school year. You know, it's an important piece of the curriculum that we hope to have online for students this year that's been sort of shelved, you know, because of unanticipated flood. I'll just pause for a second, just to see if there are any questions on the building piece, and then move on to some other stuff. You know, obviously, there's still landscaping going on around us. Are there any? We've got stuff mode too, Ed. Although it grew, yeah.
What's that?
I think we got stuff mode that grew, yeah.
Yes.
Is there any other significant things that are left to be done? Well, right now, they're in the process of getting the foundation for the concession building put into place. What goes above slab will be part of the community build and community fundraising, but the want of the building committee is to have that slab that would include, you know, the plumbing and electrical stubbings in place. So, that's going on, and a lot of it is, or the bulk of what you typically see right now is on the landscaping out front, although there are, you know, there's, there are a few little things in the proverbial punch list that are still being done. There's some testing that the building committee wanted to do on windows, and again, it's, some of the decisions are to, you know, to test and make sure that that building envelope is solid and that, and that there's not water penetration. I guess shortly after coming here, occupying this building, we were hit by one of those nor'easters, and there were a few windows that you would see some, some water along the sill, and then, of course, the question is, was it appropriately shut? You know, was it left slightly open, or did water penetrate elsewhere? The window company came, did an analysis, did a lot of caulking, and Steve Lutten, which I love him, you know, has been conducting his own independent tests with garden hoses and spraying windows down, attempting to recreate nor'easter conditions. I'm surprised we don't have the Harwich Fire Department out there with hoses, but people say he's sprayed, he's been spraying on the windows, and no water's been penetrating. So, I think these, you know, bit by bit, you know, concerns that we've had on the building have been getting reconciled. There was a commissioning process with, you know, with the rooftop units, and it's the rooftop units that we had two freeze-ups this past winter. You know, one, we'll say, was relatively benign because it created a flood that came down into a kitchen space, which has, you know, a... Floor drain. A floor, you know, a floor drain, and just, you know, it's easy to mop up and clean versus the one that, you know, was over this classroom space in the media center. Those, they're still, they went and commissioned and have said that for all intents purposes, the rooftop units are working appropriately. There's still a concern amongst some on the building committee, particularly given two failed units out of about 14 over this past winter, on whether or not we need to do some further commissioning to have somebody else come in and just make sure everything's right, particularly under winter conditions. And, you know, and, you know, I think some of the concern is that by the time the commissioning is going, those frigid days that we were experiencing in the winter are beyond us, and, you know, part of the community, it's, I think things these days, somewhat like our cars, are so fancy in terms of the electronics that, you know, they essentially hitch a computer up to, you know, to this rooftop unit and go through a computer simulation of cold, and, you know, so if the computer's registering that this, these weather conditions are happening, is it turning on a signal to the furnace? Is it shutting loopers on a unit? And, you know, so they're performing as they should, but, you know, it's certainly the difference between a computer simulation and reality. I know that the town in Harwich has had a lot of problems with HVAC systems in town hall and other town buildings, and it's probably, that's probably very common nowadays. And we, you know, we have, as a district, and other, and another school in the district have similar rooftop units that, you know, that have, you know, have had issues, and then you have, you know, you have maintenance contracts on those. It can be a very pricey, you know, challenge for, you know, the school district or municipality. In terms of other things, one thing that, we had Sam here last, last school committee talking about some transitions that would be happening at kindergarten and in a middle school, and I know Bill had another obligation that I had, but I wanted to have Bill come and briefly talk about his, I think it's a five-part plan on high school transition.
Evening, Bill.
Evening. First of all, I want to welcome Miss Ryder to the committee and look forward to working with you. As these go around, I just want to share a brief story about my dedication to lifelong learning and the concept of osmosis. Lately, I've been listening to a lot of Latin music and trying to see if the more music I listen to would absorb, and, you know, not to speak better Spanish, but to be a better dancer. And as I was practicing at home, and my daughter confirmed, I am still no longer allowed to dance at home. So, osmosis has been debunked in my theory. But, digress, I wanted to just pick up on what Lane was talking about this last couple of weeks, an exciting time for our... This last couple of weeks is an exciting time for our, our school. Our first senior class has gone through and really set the tone with really high expectations and, you know, and under really challenging circumstances, coming together, senior year typically, traditions are set, this is how we do things, this is, you know, we're looking for this X, Y, and Z to happen this year. And they really didn't know what those things were, they had to kind of pave their way and put their mark on it. And that's not always easy being a trailblazer. So, one of the examples Lane gave was Prank, although I'm working on changing the name to Pride. You know, I had a conversation last summer about this time with Superintendent Carpenter, they were a little later, I guess in June, and, you know, he talked to me about traditions and, you know, spray paint came up or something, and, and he said, that's one way, you know, one thing will not happen in a new school. I said, absolutely. But it was pretty cool that the seniors came to me knowing better and knowing that they wanted to do something. Still have that fun, have the element of surprise, leave their mark on the, the school and how we do things, but do it with class and with pride. So, we had a meeting, they talked about coming to the school in the evening and surprising the rest of the school, the teachers and the kids, and decorating in just a fun way. They provided me a list of things they would bring in, and they kept their word. I said I'd be happy to, to be there. So, we got some pizza, we hung out, we had a lot of fun. And the looks on their faces the next morning, not only the kids that came in, the teachers, but the seniors, just kind of, you know, that's the earliest I've seen any of them get there all year. But they were there real early just to see the element of surprise, and there's a lot of picture taken and stuff like that. So, really good, good stuff happened, and I'm looking forward to our, our first graduation. Of course, you all are certainly invited, I hope you can make it. This transition plan is extremely important to us. As, the first paragraph, I'm not going to read this, I, you can do that on your own, but it talks a little bit about, you know, all research will show that any transition year in school is the most difficult, from kindergarten to middle school, whether it's fifth or sixth grade, to high school in eighth or ninth grade, to college, or to the workforce. Those are the hardest years for children and their parents. And to support that, we want to make sure that our incoming students are very comfortable, very excited, as well as their parents. And this is our initial plan this year, we'll see how it goes, it's already underway. And the first step was, you know, myself and our guidance director, Mr. Gifford, visiting the Lighthouse Charter School and the middle school. And basically, just showing my face as the principal, who I am, and, you know, talking to them about all the great things that we do here. You know, you see our Friday Focus, we took a lot of pictures from that, a lot of the clubs and activities, all the things happening in our, you know, program of studies, all the opportunities. And then we just sat back and answered a lot of the questions the kids had. And that was, gave us a good pulse on what they were concerned about, and that really helped us. So, that's, you know, phase one is to get them excited, to know that there's good things to look forward to, and, you know, their imagination will run wild a little bit. And then step two, the Lighthouse Charter kids came on half-day Wednesday. They came over for an afternoon where they toured the building, they had question and answer, they met our students, they met some of our teachers, administrators, their parents came to pick them up, and we had an opportunity for them to ask questions, to see the school, to tour the building. So, part two of that is coming up in June. We're shooting for June 16, where the Monmoy middle school kids will come over on a field trip, we want to make it fun and exciting and a learning experience. And like a lot of things we do around here, our pair of leads under Ms. Chalock are organizing the entire event, and we'll take the lead, which is a really cool thing. They've gotten the agenda already, they're real excited about it. And some of the bullet points in there are basically to, you know, we pride ourselves in having tours during the school day while school's in session. We want kids to see what it's really like, and adults, anybody that tours our building, I always encourage them to come during the school day to see the real deal, talk to our kids, talk to our teachers, and we have nothing to hide, in fact, we're very proud of what happens here. So, they're coming during the school day, they'll have some fun activities to do, they'll have lunch here, they'll visit some classrooms and have their questions answered, and then they'll be back for school. So, that, part two is, okay, now you've seen it, you've got excited, you've heard about it, you've got to see it in, in real life, meet some of the, the kids, and, you know, and we'll have some of our younger kids there, our eighth graders, to answer questions about those transition things that only they can relate to most recently. Step three is something we're working on now, I have had success with this in the past as a middle school principal. It's important that our counseling team, who may be our special education director, go down with both schools, the charter school and the middle school, talk with counselors and special education folks down there, teachers and whoever else can be at the table, and just talk in general about the kids, the class coming in, their needs, any specifics, any things they're excited about, what they want to work on, just general conversations, any angle we can get to learn about the incoming kids and help them is a benefit to us. Four is the summer visits, not, sometimes you, we may have students that are a little anxious to come in big groups, or may want to come with their parents and have that separate time. We certainly encourage that, myself, Ms. Romo, the guidance team, will give personal tours over the summer, and a one-to-one type of thing. So, that is always an opportunity if that, if you miss the field trip. So, there'll always be an opportunity to come and see the school before opening day. And the last one is, you know, a new thing in which, you know, a couple of days before school, the kids will have their schedules, they'll be excited, they'll be nervous, yeah, they've seen it in June, but they'll be, the butterflies will be coming in, and now it's a big high school, it's a big jump. So, what we'd like to do is bring them in a couple of days before school with their schedules, kind of do a similar thing as we're doing in June, but to go through, find their classrooms, find their lockers, check their combination, you know, talk to some of the teachers, some of the kids, and, you know, get some more concrete expectations met, and then any questions, they'll probably have a million more at that time. Followed up by the parents' meeting coming in at the end, where the parents can also ask questions and get their concerns met. So, we're all ready and comfortable going in today. So, that's, you know, that's it in the end with, it's our goal to provide the best possible transition for our incoming eighth graders and their families. Our dedicated staff and students commit to this process, which allows our future sharks and their families a reassurance that we are doing whatever it takes to make this challenging transition a seamless one. Any questions?
I am very, very thrilled about this. First of all, that you acknowledge that transition is important, that it's a multi-step thing, and that the kids especially can see this school going on on the school day. It just looks like it's, you know, high school for middle school kids can be a little daunting for some, especially if you don't have a border sobering up here. And I think this is going to help them greatly to make it a smooth transition. Thank you.
Yeah, I commend you on this, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Eric?
Bill, a couple of questions. The reaction, the reaction of the Lighthouse Charter. Rough numbers, how many Howard's Chatham seventh graders, would you guess that are over there that might be listening to you? I'd also include eighth graders who might be there, who might decide not to go someplace else.
I think in the seventh grade class, I think we had about 30 kids come over. And I don't know if that was a full class, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but we, we had the majority of the students, they were early released that day, so they could have went home.
Sure.
So, they decided to stay late and take the bus over, so I think we had the majority of students come over.
Good.
We also, yeah, we also had some, part of that trip was also choice kids that weren't living in Howard's Chatham that wanted to come over, they were going, you know, to visit, we kind of compiled it into that trip from other communities that wanted to come in. So, we've had a lot of, you know, interest in the school, those type of visits.
I think one of the, one of the nice things that I think has come out of this is, Sturgis has already gone through their, their acceptance process, so we know how many students from Harwich and Chatham are planning to head to Sturgis versus how many from Harwich and Chatham are graduating. And, and what we're seeing is that there's roughly a 50% decrease in the number that are heading out versus those that are, have been out, that are graduating. So, we're seeing, you know, forward movement there, which is moving in and out.
I know that, you know, there was some concern by parents with their original plan to have the eighth grade in, in this building. And now, we've had, you know, we've had a full year of it, I'm curious as to what kind of feedback you've gotten, you know, from the eighth grade kids and from their parents, you know, first, first victims, if you will, of transition. Have you, have you heard much of good, bad, and different?
Absolutely. You know, we had the student survey and, and broke it up by grades, and the eighth graders, you know, they were excited to be here, they were certainly nervous and anxious, they didn't have this plan fully in place, so that's one thing we learned, that there was some anxiety coming in, and they felt they could use some preparation and some transition support. So, that certainly came from this, that was a good thing that we learned, that they needed help with. The rigor is, is very challenging, we're now in a high school environment from seventh grade, and, you know, that was the difficult transition. And from that, next year is part of our philosophy, and something you will see unique, hopefully in a lot of high schools, but certainly on the Cape, is a teaming model that's common in middle schools. We're bringing that to our eighth grade next year, where the same five teachers, the, you know, four content and special education will share the same 70 students. And then they'll have the same common planning time off during the day, so when they all meet, they talk about all those kids. So, nobody falls through the cracks. It's like, okay, little Joey's slipping up here, two weeks in, how do we help him? How's he, how's he doing in your class? We didn't have that this year. So, things could have slipped through the cracks like that. We saw that the need for that is going to be really profound for us, we think. The teachers are excited, fully behind it. It'll help with our kids getting, you know, to know their cohort, ease them into the high school transition, but also get the supports during the school day from their teachers. Also allows us some time during the day to meet with parents if necessary, which is always tough to do after school with people's schedules, so it's a huge benefit. A lot of research that shows teaming in the eighth grade and middle school models certainly works. So, we're going to bring that to the high school next year, and we're excited about that.
Have you had that much feedback from the parents about the eighth grader being up here? I would imagine that some are concerned about, you know, I remember people used to be concerned about which kids rode on which bus, you know, how young do you want to have kids on a bus with older kids? And I imagine the same concerns were raised with having the eighth grade students here. And the parents were probably as nervous about it as the kids were. Have you had much feedback from the parents, or, I suppose if you haven't, that's a good thing in a way.
Well, I really haven't in a negative, you know, some, initially, that was some concerns with the age of the, you know, but we've got great kids, we really do. I mean, the first decision they made was that the eighth graders, I told the story at the beginning, they had sleepless nights, you know, about the first dance, letting eighth grade kids, you know, 11, 12-year-olds, even with 17, 18-year-olds in their first dance. But they made it easy for me, because the high school, you know, the senior, junior, senior kids were like, well, we're not letting the eighth graders come to our dance. That was when we were first trying to be Monmoy, and that part of the family. And I was like, oh, I can't leave the eighth graders out. The eighth grade student council came to me and said, you know, Mr. Burke, no disrespect, but can we have our own dance? So, that was, that solved that problem, they had their own dance, you know, like that, and they transitioned in. So, I think by having great kids and, and, you know, really a community that we set, by those seniors setting the tone, I really haven't had a lot of complaints from the eighth grade parents, any different than any other grade, you know, really, just that initial anxiety and wishing that they could have a transition model and come in and be, you know, aware of some of the things we're all about. Quite honestly, first year, we didn't know a lot of the things we know now to share with. So, they were like the senior class in all classes, though that eighth grade was a pioneer group that we learned a lot from, and that some of the models like this and the teaming have come from, learning from that experience.
An interesting side about buses is, last year, I think particularly students at the elementary level, who are parents of students at the elementary level, were coming up to the middle school, were concerned about buses because the, the practice in both Harwich and Chatham were sharing, you know, they were sharing buses for middle school and high school. So, you know, so, you know, both districts had a very, you know, wide range of grade levels on buses. One of the things that I'll give Cape Destinations a lot of credit for is coming out with an out-of-box solution. And, you know, so we're, you know, we, you know, have both the middle school and high school opening at the same time, and we have buses that are transporting just high school students, you know, eight through 12, eighth grade through 12th grade, over here, and, and buses that are transporting just middle school students, where it's five through eight. So, we were actually able to shrink, or sort of five through seven, so we were able to shrink the age ranges of students on the buses. So, it, it was sort of a, a concern that some people had that, that that sort of somewhat resolved in the, in the process of regionalization.
And I think what also helped was the sports studying, you know, early emerging, but the eighth graders allowed to do clubs and activities, our strong, you know, finance program, a lot of the eighth graders have clubs and activities, we have over 30 here. Those eighth graders really took advantage of that joint, and that's where a lot of the, you know, relationships were built, the older kids and friendships, and, you know, so when they saw them in the hallways, it made life a little easier. So, I think that was a huge advantage for us.
Just as a parent of one of the eighth grade pioneers, I would say that we were bracing ourselves going into this, and it's been so incredibly smooth, and there's just great enthusiasm and spirit in the school, and, and respect for the school and, and each other, it seems. And it's been great. And the communication has been key, as, you know, a parent not knowing, and having a boy, not every bit of information comes back. And so, it's very nice to get the Friday Focus, I cannot thank you enough for that.
I think that, that's my experience with my 10th grade son, just walking through, handouts all over the place.
What'd you do, Nick? Nothing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a few other things. I received an interesting email from Rizardo saying that we need to revise a document that the former Harwich school committee had negotiated for solar panels on the middle school. And I was like, well, the middle school isn't a building anymore. And I was like, oh, good, I can go and take this monkey off my back and put it on Chris Clark, the town administrators, back in Harwich, only to find out a few days later that there weren't solar panels on the middle school either, that there was a, you know, some typo in the document that was initially went through, that it was all about the solar panels on the elementary school in Harwich. So, so in an upcoming school committee meeting, we'll need to take the, the contract for the solar energy credits that, that the Harwich Elementary School should be getting and have it revised to be Monmoy. But it's sort of this interesting dilemma, it's like, huh? It's not our thing anymore. Just to give the school committee a heads up on this one, and I know I've had some parents, some parents ask about this as well. We're in the process of interviewing for and hiring kindergarten teachers. So, I, over the last couple of days, had three fantastic kindergarten teachers come through my office, and they're all eager to, you know, to start, start with this next year. The challenge is kindergarten class size and class size between our two districts. During the budgeting process, we talked about, that, you know, we saw that we could go and contract Harwich Elementary School by one kindergarten section, and we go from six, go from six sections of kindergarten to five. And, and we can stay within the school committee guidelines doing that in Harwich. And our class sizes would be about 19, we'd have full-time aides in each one of those kindergarten classrooms. The dilemma comes at Chatham Elementary School, where we apparently have a small cohort of Chatham kindergarten children for next year. So, as it stands, if we were to have two kindergarten sections in Chatham, we would have two classes of 19 with full-time aides. If we were to continue and have three kindergarten sections at Chatham, we'd have two classes, or three classes of 13, yeah, which creates, you know, a pretty wide discrepancy between the two schools. My preference would be to see us actually still have three kindergarten sections in Chatham. Now, I was saying to draft a letter to kindergarten families and, and encourage families to consider Chatham Elementary School, to, you know, to consider, have Harwich families consider Chatham Elementary School, would be sort of usually beneficial and help us reduce kindergarten class sizes across the district. But at the moment, I'm hesitant to hire that fourth kindergarten teacher, which would be the third kindergarten teacher in, in Chatham, because I'm, yeah, I'm uncomfortable with creating a situation that would then persist for, you know, for the next, you know, for the next several years, where we have, you know, classes that would be drastically different between the two, you know, the two elementary schools. So, just a heads up on that one, but as I said, you know, the, the want is to try to equalize that, and, and it's sort of an interesting thing to try to equalize when, when the regional agreement says, Harwich children will go to Harwich, Sturgis and Chatham children will go to Chatham.
Do we have, I mean, we would never, obviously, we've never, I don't think we're currently telling Harwich parents that they can't send their kids to Chatham Elementary School, right?
We, we, we aren't doing that. I, I, I am limit-setting on the other direction because we, we can't We aren't doing that. I am limit-setting on the other direction because we can't, we really can't have Chatham families go to Harwich and shrink it, you know, shrink it down. But, you know, but we'll be encouraging and seeing if we could find Harwich families that are interested in going the other direction, which would, again, allow us to pull Harwich class sizes down and hopefully allow us to add a third section in Chatham and hopefully come close to equal that way.
How do Harwich kindergarteners or Harwich elementary's age children get to the Chatham Elementary School?
Through their parents. What, although we, I, I, I'm hopeful that we could, again, you know, look at Cake Destinations, and I don't know if we can do it yet this year, but I think potentially a year from now, we could be at a place where we could free, so there's, there's three buses in Chatham and there's ten buses that serve Harwich Elementary School. And if we could make it nine and four, we might be able to have a bus that is doing a loop, an aggregated loop, whether it can, you know, do door service, I don't know. But that might, that might help us, again, equalize numbers in the district.
So this is a new concept that you're talking about. That would not allow them, or would it allow for us to have school choice fill out that and gain some money? If we didn't have, I mean, if we've got nineteen in Harwich, which is a good number, and much less in Chatham, would it be a problem for us to have school choice, fill out that and gain the money from them?
No, the doors are open for school choices.
For Chatham.
For Chatham. And there, and in Harwich, we have had families that have older siblings that have choiced in. We, you know, we waited until we were able to see what the numbers looked like, but we were able to reach out to a few families. So every family that is in that situation that has an older sibling, we were able to reach out to them and say, we can accommodate you at Harwich Elementary.
Oh, so everyone that was in make way for kids or any other program in Harwich now can stay in Harwich?
It's, it's families that have an older sibling in Harwich. So if you have, if you have a third grader in Harwich, you would be able to stay in Harwich.
You mean an older sibling at Harwich Elementary, not necessarily at Monroey High School? Okay.
What about if somebody was at a make way? Does that grandfather them in?
If they're, if they're, if they are Chatham residents, we would have them going to Chatham Elementary. But we wouldn't be able to have them at Harwich Elementary.
Nancy.
What is the numbers, the current numbers looking like for Harwich residents going into Chatham Elementary? Because there's always been a handful of Harwich residents coming to Chatham.
I don't have the exact numbers on the document, but it's, they're...
About the average or?
Yeah, it's, there, there, there has always been significantly more Harwich families opting for Chatham Elementary than the reverse. And part of it's just that, that there wasn't the space for, you know, for the reverse. And I have one parent who would be interested in Harwich Elementary School and, you know, from Chatham. We've just had to say no, that there's, you know, it would be moving from smaller class sizes to larger and making larger class sizes larger, which, you know, isn't good for the school or the class.
Are you feeling that this kindergarten class in Chatham is unique? That the next year's group will present the same numbers or that they'll be the regular numbers to fill out more?
Yeah, I, at this point, I don't know. I, you know, I thought, you know, we thought that, that there were the, the numbers there at the, at the preschool level, but we keep waiting for, for that number to creep up and at the moment it hasn't.
I do think that if you, if we're able to, with the bus, come to thirty-nine or some area around there, that we probably would see some parents from Harwich decide to bring their kids over to Chatham.
How many more would you need in order to have a third classroom, would you say?
I, I, I don't, I don't think it takes many more. It's, you know, again, I want to be sensitive to the fact that we're running a new regional district and I don't want to have a situation where we're potentially having friction of me making an administrative decision that, that runs three classes of thirteen when I could be two of nineteen when Harwich is running it nineteen. So it's, it's like, you know, it's, so I, I would look at it that if we get a, you know, if we got, you know, four more students, we would, from the school committee guideline standpoint, we would be able to really say, well, we're now going beyond this eighteen plus or minus one that we want to stay within at the elementary level and that we should be adding to the class. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to mitigate factors and encourage, encourage things to equalize. But at the moment, we still have the school committee guideline that we've talked about in both, in both cases.
Does, does that mean that, I mean, I know you can't look into the future, but the, the, if you reduced Chatham to two kindergarten classes, would that be eliminating a first grade teacher next year?
Well, or potentially it has a first grade teacher shifting to kindergarten for, you know, for a year.
Right, I see.
So, you know, so, you know, just Harwich, Harwich Elementary School actually has sort of the inverse problem. If you look at the class sizes, the current fourth grade class, I believe, is this bubble here. You know, that has class sizes that are far out of what that school committee norm is. But it's, but it was a bubble that we've been, that's been sort of slowly moving its way up. You know, there, there should have been another classroom for the kids, but there was no room for another classroom in the building. And so, and so it's, you know, you'll have, you'll have some ebbs and flows. And at the moment, we have, you know, sort of an unexpected lower number of students, of students in Chatham. And I think it would be, I think it would be educationally beneficial if we could find some voluntary movement towards Chatham Elementary.
Right. You know, I, to remind Sharon and others of the other edge of the sword of trying to have a school choice into Chatham Elementary Schools. Once they come in in order to break those additional funds or allow us to keep a third teacher, we, we own them, if you will, and then we have the problem of having too many students in the middle school and the high school. You know, we're already trying to plan for the future in terms of how many students we're taking into the elementary school so that we don't overfill our new high school.
I understand that, but right now what's happening is, well, I don't, I don't know the factors on Chatham Elementary School and how many numbers per class. But if we eliminate one in Harwich, we're going to be eliminating at least twenty kids there. And that's going to stay that way for all classes' future. And so if we don't overload Chatham more than they've had, or much more than they had, then it should still be twenty less. Now, I don't know how that figures into what happens at high school if twenty less per class is going to do it.
I think something that, you know, that we need to just acknowledge and that's that, that Kate, why there's, there continues to be decreasing, you know, population and decreasing, you know, population of school-aged, you know, school-aged children. You know, so it's, you know, so what, what we're doing at Harwich Elementary by contracting by a section is acknowledging the reality of the population that exists in the town, just like, you know, the, you know, Chatham Elementary. At the moment, we, you know, there's just not enough kids to, you know, to merit potentially that third, you know, that third classroom. And again, I, as an administrator, I defer to, you know, see, it would be nice if we were seeing, you know, all these classes were running at about seventeen. You know, that would be great. I'd love to see that. And now if we can do some creative social engineering to get there, that's, that's, that's sort of the, the goal over the next two weeks.
One last comment I might just, you know, during the budget season, we had a number of, you know, get up and speak about, you know, the reason they moved here was because of the, the new high school. And, you know, we, we don't want to cut the budget to the point where we're not inviting new families to move here, which, you know, and I'm certainly happy to have people move here. But it's important to remember that we didn't design this with the goal of bringing in students from other towns. The goal was to be able to, and keep the children of Harwich and Chatham, you know, in the system and give them a reason not to go elsewhere. So, you know, we still have that goal as part of, I mean, so it seems to me that the only, the only real long-term solution that we're talking about to the fact that we have more numbers in our elementary school than Harwich than Chatham is to find a way to have some of the Harwich people be motivated to send their kids to Chatham. That's the only realistic way to do it and still keep within our master plan, if you will, of, of keeping the kids here.
And I, I think if we, I think this is something that, as I said, we'll try to creatively social engineer. I, I think if we were seeing this happen for a few years to come, I think that's when I would advocate that you look at the regional agreement and you look at this concept that, you know, you send Harwich students here and Harwich students there, that maybe you step back and think of Monroey East and Monroey West. And, you know, but, you know, I don't think we need to go there yet. But if you were to continue to have, you know, to have inequities in terms of numbers or, you know, or, you know, it would merit looking at something like that.
Sharon.
Since you brought up the fourth grade and the large numbers, is that going to be mitigated next year? That there'll be smaller class size for that group that's suffered through large class size for five years?
It won't, it won't be mitigated. And so we, we didn't build into the budget to go and add, you know, add a teacher. So there's the Harwich, you know, the, there's, I think, the third grade and fourth, the current third grade and current fourth graders from the last two that are, we'll say the fourth grade, the fourth graders will mitigate because they'll head off to the middle school. But, you know, but there's still, you know, there's still a number that's slightly above that school committee want that was, you know, that's, that's been a bubble ever since I got here, you know, slowly moving through.
So maybe in, as the year progresses, we can look at that when we're looking at the budget to see if some of those kids move to Charter or someplace else, or if they're still going to be there. Because it, it just seems unfair to that group to forever in their career, you know, they're through the high school, have to be in a larger group than what other kids have.
If there are any other questions on that, the last thing, I would just go on to, to, I would say, it dovetails into what Steve sort of started out with, up with on the, on the committee assignments. But one of those committees deals with superintendent evaluation. And one of the things that, that we did last year to sort of kick off the process was to, did for, you know, for the committee, a goals, a goals reflection, looking at, you know, the school committee goals and the, you know, where we've made progress and what we've, what we've done. And Ms. Scott asked me to, to put together a binder of evidence last year. So I've been putting together a little binder with, you know, with little, little things that we kept in my office if folks wanted to go. So, so for some light, light summer meeting, this, this for me was like therapy. And it was actually, it was actually, it was actually a good thing because it gave me a chance to, you know, look back at times after a hard week and say, it's like, yeah, you know, we did make headway. In some places, like, okay, I wish we had made a little bit more headway. But I, I found myself, every time I'd walk back to the documents, like, oh, I could go in. There's this one thing that I forgot about that we could, you know, you know, we could talk about. So, so this is a, it, it just provides a reflection, sort of a, an overarching reflection for me on each of the five goals that, that the school committee had. And then there were action steps that were identified within, within each of these, within each of these goals that I spent time reflecting on, you know, what sort of headway did we make? Or what sort of learning is there for, you know, for improvement? I don't want to go and belabor and go through, go through the whole document. I think that we can just sort of, even if we can read the, I, I think if we just jump to, what did we do? The top of the fifth page or flip it over to two pages, just above the number, goal number three of the next, it talks about the next steps as it pertains to, as it pertains to regional organization. I think when I came to the district, there had been, just prior to the arriving here, a, a, I guess, a strategic planning group that had gotten together to sort of plot out where the district should be going over the course of regionalization. And my take would be, we've, for all intents and purposes, accomplished that mission. And the district has been regionalized. And I, I think that it's now time to sort of, you know, put regionalization behind us and to really now look forward and go through a new strategic planning process to start to focus really on the academic plan, or, you know, the academic program and where we want to take the academic program moving forward now that we're regionalized. And, you know, and I, I think the, you know, I, I think for me, as an educator, I think it's my frustration as I'm typing this up is so much of this document is on budget and regionalization. And we really need to sort of shift the focus of where we're heading to the program, the curriculum, and where we're going next. And, you know, as, over the course of the summer, we'll be going through that next strategic planning process, looking forward as a district and shifting away from regionalization and, you know, shifting forward towards, you know, towards curricular improvements, student outcomes.
Any other questions? Ms. Scott?
Just a comment that I agree. I think it's kind of, we're regionalized, we're done. This, this was the year when everything came together that we've all been working towards. So it's nice to be able to say, that's done. Now let's look toward the future, what we want to keep going with. It's a nice chapter to close at the end of the school year. There's no more tests.
Time to build the future.
Right.
Next item on the agenda is action items. And do you have anything you want to say about the approval?
It was in the original, it was in the past, it's last month and last meeting on this meeting.
So do I have a motion to approve the audit proposal from Lynch-Malloy and Mariney?
Say it. Three years?
Three years.
For your contract with the regular auditors.
I would move to accept the Lynch-Malloy and Mariney LLP auditing proposal for the next three years.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
Do you have any?
I abstain, right?
Oh, okay. We do need to adjourn to a executive session, which we will not be returning to the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to do an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining units and non-union contracts.
Second.
And will call Karen?
Say aye.
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 Aye.